Good evening, and welcome you all to the Committee of the Whole meeting here in Council Chambers. Called to order here at 6:00 P. M. We have no electronic attendance correct. So we move to our proclamations. The first is for Black Hawk College Foundation to proclaim October 19, 2021 as Black Hawk College 75th Anniversary Day. So I'll read this, and then if you have any remarks, please come to the mic. Whereas, Black Hawk College was founded in 1946 as Moline Community College and has become one of 48 community colleges in the state of Illinois, serving over 6,000 students annually. And whereas Black Hawk College embraces the unique contribution of all members of our community and serves the communities of Community College District 503 in the great city of Moline and state of Illinois. And whereas Black Hawk College has provided education and training opportunities that has transformed the lives of thousands of students for 75 years. And whereas Black Hawk College strives to continue in its mission to inspire students, develop talent, and strengthen communities for another 75 years. Now therefore, I, Sangitha Raiapudi, Mayor of Moline, do hereby proclaim October 19, 2021, as Black Hawk College 75th Anniversary Day. So with us tonight are Zenaida Londeros, Executive Director of the Foundation, and President Wines. Does anyone want to? No, he's not here. Okay. Thank you. Did you want to provide any remarks? All right. All right, well, I'd be happy to present this to you. We have another proclamation this evening. Requested by KJ Whitley, Community Development Program Manager, to proclaim October 24 through 30, 2021, as National Lead Poisoning Prevention Week. So I will read the proclamation. Whereas lead exposure to children can result from multiple sources and can cause irreversible and lifelong health effects. And whereas more than 12,000 children of the 237,000 tested in the state of Illinois in 2018 had blood levels at the public health intervention level recommended by the CDC. And whereas lead is especially dangerous to children under the age of six. And whereas lead poisoning is preventable, the key is to keep children from coming into contact with lead. And whereas there are simple steps that can be taken to protect all family members from lead-based paint hazards in the home. And whereas education and awareness about the dangers of lead can help protect the lives of children living in Moline. Now therefore, I, Sangitha Raiapudi, Mayor of Moline, do hereby proclaim October 24th through 30th, 2021, as National Lead Poisoning Prevention Week in the city of Moline, Illinois. And I urge all residents and city officials to observe this week with appropriate programs and activities designed to enhance public awareness of lead poisoning prevention and the ways that we can protect our families from lead poisoning. Thank you so much. Can you give her a hand for that? Is there any public comment at the moment? Okay, hearing none other questions on the agenda. Hearing them, we will move to our agenda items. Number one, mending Chapter 35 zoning and land development of the Moline Code of Ordinances zoning map.
Yes, Mayor, before the council this evening is a council action report to approve the recommend Plan Commission recommended rezoning and land development for the property located at 2215 37th Street and 3640 22nd Avenue. These are vacant parcels at the present time with the plans by Mr. Antiveros of Mad Productions LLC to rezonate from R2 to B3 as approved by the Plan Commission and to construct a coffee house on the parcels.
Motion to approve, second.
This is a motion by Alderman Waldron, seconded by Alderman Went. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right.
That was good.
Number two. I T A amendment with Village of Mylan for water and sanitary sewer service.
Yes, Mayor, and council before you is the amendment to intergovernmental agreement with the Village of Mylan, which they adopted on, I believe it was the 4th of October this year. And it involves providing water and sewer services where the Village of Mylan is not capable of doing so, and allowing for the annexation of those properties, not the, yeah, the annexation of those, provision of service to those properties, because it cannot be annexed. And it includes two properties that are requesting services now and four additional properties. So a total of six properties represented by this intergovernmental agreement amendment with the Village of Mylan.
Motion to approve, second.
Motion by Alderman Waldron, seconded by Alderman Went. Any discussion?
Your Honor.
Mr. Waldron.
Tony, do we still charge out-of-city folks at a higher rate?
Yes, the out-of-city rate.
Out-of-city rate for water is 200%. Out-of-city rate for wastewater is 110%.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Went.
Uh, sorry, Tony. For this, will there be any additional infrastructure that we need to put in for this? Or we already, I mean, we've.
They're just connecting to existing infrastructure.
Do you feel, there was some discussion last week about looking at rates. Do you think that out-of-system or out-of-city municipal rates may be something we'd need to look at? I mean, because we've got some seriously expensive infrastructure that we've put to service some of these out-of-city stuff that the residents of Moline are footing the bill for. Are we charging enough for the out-of?
It's a good question. I think that it is worthy to look at that.
Okay.
It would be part of any rate review, and if the rates did increase, they would have to bear that.
Mr. Went.
Yeah, but I think that this is a separate issue. I mean, this is, I mean, it's very much like the, what we're providing service for fire protection for people who aren't paying their fair share of it. That's different than the residents who are paying their fair share. There's the free rider approach. So our people may be paying exactly right, where those, that's why I have a problem with it being just tied, oh, 200%, because it feels like it's just a made-up number that.
I'll ask a question and may, do you know how that percentage was derived from?
I don't know how the percentage was derived, but I can tell you that the I G A references the code. And so if council's will is to have us look at the out-of-city rates, we can certainly do that.
Terrific, thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Hearing, oh, Mr. Schmidt.
I just want to, I'm trying to understand, so what Alderman Went is asking about, it's, you're not asking about the long-term cost of like the ongoing supply, you're asking about the upstart cost? Or?
Both.
Both.
Kind of both.
That's Ms. Went.
Yeah, I mean, so to pay for it to get there at its expense. Oh, it's, you know, it's okay. Yeah, I mean, with any of our services, especially when you're talking about enterprises, there is both the get it to me, and then what is the long-term, you know, those pipes don't last forever. And so you have to charge enough, not only to cover your water, but also your future fixes. And clearly, if we're providing service outside of our boundaries, the per linear foot of future costs is much higher than going from this parcel to that parcel to this parcel within the city. And so that's where, if you're looking at these things, it's a, it's a different mathematical, and that's why tying it just 200% over what seems to be a grab-out-of-the-air number.
Mr. Bligh.
The, the intent of the, the higher rate is, is not necessarily for this instance where we're serving another, or we're serving properties in another community. It's, it's to capture, or it's to incentivize those properties that are on the periphery of Moline that are not contiguous with our order, that can't annex, to, to get them to annex eventually.
And unfortunately, in this circumstance, that's not possible because of pre-existing boundary agreement, intergovernmental agreement with the Village of Mylan, which is the yellow line on the map.
Mr. Went.
And to that, that is certainly something that we could consider having a different rate for the, the ones that have a possibility of annexing versus the ones that are in a different jurisdiction. So we'll talk about that at the end, end of the meeting.
All right. Any further questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Number three, purchase of two flaked pumps and control panel with electric pump for Rock River Lift Station. And special note here, it's also going to appear on the council agenda this evening. And we've noted the recent budget amendment and the account adding $80,000 to fund this needed project.
Pretty much sums it up. It was originally, I would, I would say this, this project was originally budgeted back in fiscal year 2020, and was postponed as a result of the cutbacks during the pandemic. So it's being presented here to the council this evening so that critical equipment can be replaced.
Move to approve, second.
Right. Motion by Alderman O'Brien, seconded by Alderman Went. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number four, change order number one on final with McQuintock Trucking and Excavating Inc. for project number 1341, 2020 Stormwater Project.
Mayor and council, as you recall, this was on a previous agenda, and with, with the Director of Utilities, we pulled this item for the agenda in order to get clarification on the change order versus the remaining balance in the contract. The actual change order that we're looking for approval for is $10,000,185, put that right, $10,000,185.88. And that is because of the subsurface conditions that existed during the construction of the project that were unforeseen.
Move to approve, second.
Motion by Alderman Went, seconded by Alderman O'Brien. Any discussion? Mr. Went.
Do we have, I, I know, I think I got from Tony about the reserves from stormwater, but I had thought that we might be underwater on the reserves for stormwater. How much do we have?
I, I think, I think, I believe that about 25% actually.
For stormwater?
For passion or stamina.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Number five, mending Chapter 5 amusements of the Moline Code of Ordinances, video gaming terminals. Ms. Christopoulos?
Thank you. So pursuant to your direction to this thing, we have prepared an amendment to the gaming ordinance which allows for an increase to up to six terminals in each establishment, which now mirrors the state in gaming board regulations. So previously, we ran five, which was the then current mandate. The state has raised the amendment to six, so we.
There are motion?
Motion to approve, second.
All right. A motion by Alderman Timian, seconded by Alderman Schmidt. Mr. O'Brien.
Motion. So do we have to follow the state's lead on this? Or, I mean, it just seems like these things are ballooning everywhere, you know?
Can I, took some of that? We don't have to, we're home rule, but I did receive several emails from operators who asked us to follow the state guidelines. Yes, Mr. Went.
The last time this was brought up, we, we also had the discussion regarding our moratorium that we had put in place to limit it to 30 licenses within the city. And I think that that was at a time when we were trying to get a handle on the, the slot houses, the places that they had a cooler, beer, and, and just basically did slots. I, I thought that we were, that as part of this, there was going to be some discussion regarding the relaxing of that moratorium.
I just haven't brought that yet. I wanted to separate it up.
Is, what's, what's your intent? I mean, just want to know, should we talk about it now, or is?
Well, it's not pertinent to this particular item, so we can talk about it during.
It's the same code section, so it's absolutely pertinent. Because, I mean, if we're talking about the number of machines in the city of Moline, do we want more at a very specialized, the winners get more of the pie, and those that are new to our community that are starting new businesses are shut out? Or do we want a situation in which maybe we keep it at five, and the additional ones that would have otherwise gone to those who have the riches, maybe go to help some of our new establishments that are, that are coming in?
Margaret Heather.
So we are looking at that. We're going there, not looking at minutes from the original discussion that said that we're going to get 30 licenses. So we will bring that there at a different time.
Do, do you have a timeframe of?
When their research is finished.
Yeah, I think, and so.
So I guess I would move to table this until we have that discussion, because I think that those are discussion points that if we're going to be talking about the number of machines we have in our community, we gotta, we should be talking about where they're going to be placed. So I'll move to table until we bring.
Second.
Is it motion to table? Oh, there's no discussion for that, correct? I left my guidance.
Yep, no.
That's right, okay. So I'm seconded, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
All right, I need a vote call, please.
Alderman Moyer?
Nay.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Nay.
Williams? Oh, I'm sorry. Macias?
Nay.
Went?
Aye.
Timian?
Nay.
Three ayes, four nays? Would you care to vote now?
No. This is not tabled, though, based on that, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Another comment, Mr. Schmidt?
So I think both of the parts of the conversation are going to be important to have, but I don't necessarily, I, I disagree that they're connected. I think that if you have five stands in a location, or if you have six stands in a location, is basically no distinction at all. And I think that, you know, following along to that state statute and allowing businesses to go to that amount. I do hope we find a way to allow more businesses to access our, our gaming machines as well. But I think that's a conversation on another day, and that, that allowing those who have them now to open up this is a, is a good step we can take to support that.
And then comments, Mr. Went?
I, I just have some concerns on, you know, basically the rich getting richer and the new people coming in being artificially closed out of this, this process. If we're going to allow these in our community, the, you know, we want to be welcoming, we want new businesses on Avenue of the Cities, on downtown. And it is clear, I've talked with lots of bar owners, the ones that have them and the ones that don't. And for a lot of them, this made the difference on them being able to, to meet their nut. Not necessarily if it was five or six, but just the ability to have them and have that revenue. And so I, I'm going to vote against this right now, because I believe doing this without addressing the issue of the others is something I can't support. Down the road, I'll, I'll support it if we can figure out a way to be a community that has a, a balance here that also encourages the, the upstarts and new businesses coming in and not artificially shutting them out.
Okay, so I need to clarify that I think there's some confusion on what we're talking about, because you can't talk about things being kept when we're, you can't conflate the salons, the slot machine salons, where there is a cap on how many of those we can have with the number of terminals, because I don't recall this limiting the actual number of licenses for those types of establishments. It's for just the number of terminals in establishments. Am I incorrect on our code?
No.
Right. So we can't conflate the two different kinds of businesses.
No, I, I'm not talking about the, the salons. I'm talking about new bars and restaurants that are coming into our community that we are artificially shutting out of this, uh, access of revenue, this revenue stream. I mean, right now, a new bar that wants to come in, and we've got empty spots in the element. We've got empty spots downtown. We've got empty spots on, in Old Town and Uptown. And new bars or restaurants that want to come in are shut out artificially from this revenue stream. And what we're voting on today is for those that artificially are held to have a, it's not a monopoly, but a very limited number. They now have access to more of that revenue, while we still are not addressing those that are shut out of this, this thing. That may be the difference between them staying open and having to close their doors.
I understand how you explain it that way. I would still say, though, the, a question to be asked is, do we want these machines all over the city? Where, what is our role in determining how much is too much? I mean, will we be in the same situation as we are with, or were with the slot machine salons, where there were two, you know, there were going to be too many, and they were all over the city? So there are a lot of questions to answer here. But one perspective on this particular code request is, or code update, is simply to be in line with the state and to take some action that has been requested by businesses that currently exist. Yes, Mr. Macias?
Thank you. And I, I just want to say, we also want to be supportive of those businesses that have been here. And, and this is a, a benefit to them for choosing Moline a long time ago. And, and it's just a slight tweak for them. Now, new businesses, whether they choose to come here or not, there's other programs that we can look at. But I do see these as two separate things. While they're in the same category, it is two separate things. It's supporting current businesses. And then if there's new businesses in the future, we can look at it. And we obviously already were told there's some work being done to do so.
Mr. Went.
I, I, I think that the framing it as new business versus existing, we've got a lot of existing businesses that were shut out at this thing. They, or ones that came in right after the moratorium was, was put in, or changed owners and lost their license, or moved locations and lost their license because of this artificial thing. We have people who have been in Moline for years, that because of this artificial thing has, have been shut out of it. Some of them which had the license before and then lost it. And so I, I hear what you're saying, but when the mayor talks about, you know, our concern about proliferation and how many places we want it, I, I, I understand that. But this is something where we're also talking about the proliferation of more in those very, you know, those 30 that have the, the special golden ticket, that they get more of that revenue share. And those others are, again, artificially cut out. So I, I, again, I said I'm not necessarily against this in theory. It needs to be discussed and decided upon in conjunction with the other comment, because we may make the decision, yes, we do want these other businesses to have it, but now, wow, God, I wish we would have just kept it at five across the board, because we're not now going to pull back from these. You're going to have to do six for everybody. And now you're talking about more and more machines. And so, you know, if that's the route you want to go, I'm not going to support that route. I think that those need to be discussed at the same time.
I think Ms. Christopoulos has a comment, and Mr. O'Brien, I would also add that you, you make a case then for needing to look at the ordinance as well, because it seems quite hypocritical to have caps on alcohol establishments, or at least the Quest Double C that we've done, and then say, oh, no, we're not going to have caps on anything else. We are trying to maintain some control over what our city looks like. I, I'm not sure that anybody's put forth that we want to have overproliferation throughout the, the city. So code would have to be looked at in, in similar ways we've looked at with distancing and density and all of that kind of stuff. So it's, it's not just a, it's not just a wide-open invitation to have this in your establishment in Moline. Margaret?
I am.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. O'Brien?
So this, this amendment is actually increasing the number of machines, though. It will increase the number of machines. And I guess a rhetorical question for the council, do we want more of these machines? I mean, I don't think that's a way to, I mean, I'm not a businessman, I'll admit it, but I don't think that's the way we want to go with the city. We don't want, these things are going to be everywhere. They already are everywhere. And I, I just don't, these gaming machines are, I mean, I don't think gambling's the way you grow your economy. I, I just think it's a dirty way to grow your economy. And I, you know, Mr. Went, you know, whatever you want to do is fine, but I'm not going to vote for any more machines.
Thank you. Mr. Macias, was that a hand?
Yeah, and, and I just want to say, there's a difference between adding another machine in a bar that already has them, as opposed to adding another store, or, or bar, or another storefront that has those machines. If people are going to go to that place, there's machines there anyway. So whether it's five or six, you're still going to have the opportunity as long as they're not all taken. So I, I, I don't think it's that big of a deal, whether people do it occasionally, or they do it a lot at these places. That, I, I, that's on them. People are adults, and they can decide for themselves, in my opinion, how much they want to use these things.
Mr. O'Brien?
Well, that's true, but if there's a sixth machine, and there's a sixth person that's going to be throwing their money away in a sixth machine. And then there's going to be a seventh machine, and an eighth machine. And, you know, like we're saying here, these other establishments are going to say, well, we want a part of the action. We want to have machines that people go waste their money on. Yeah, people are allowed to make choices. Oftentimes, they make really bad ones. And I feel it's got, you know, our job here is to try, try to remediate as much of that as we can.
Thank you.
That's how I feel about it.
Thank you. Mr. Went?
And, and to that point, I mean, I, I think that the middle ground would be if we say, okay, we've got X amount of machines in the city right now, limit the number of machines, but then more equitably disperse them between establishments if, 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 if we want to have that economic growth and, and have it just as something that helps the establishment pay their bills and, and get over the, the hump. I, I, that's what I would be, not a proliferation of more and, and some, because then if we then do make the decision to have more establishments do it, then they're all going to have another six and everything. Where if we maybe come up with a limitation on the number of machines, and then figure out an equitable way to, to do them throughout the city to help all of our businesses, you know, that'd be something I would support.
Mr. Schmidt?
I still, I think, I still believe this needs to happen. I still do believe we need to be looking at our separate, how we increase. I still do believe we need to be looking at our separate, how we increase those, um, the opportunity for additional people to get involved. And, um, I think that, that I, I've been convinced by the arguments that are put forward in that we should be considering these items together and that wanting to bring them back together. So I make a motion to table until such time as we can review both of these. Uh, at the same time, in the same ordinance, I'm not offering direction there, just that they be at the same time at the very least.
Second.
All right, motion by Alderman Schmidt, seconded by Alderman Moyer. Uh, we're gonna do a roll call, please. Alderman Moyer?
Aye.
O'Brien?
So we're tabling them again.
Yep.
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Macias?
Nay.
Went?
Aye.
Timian?
Nay.
We have five ayes and two nays to table. All right, so we're tabling to consider together. Okay. Number six, amending chapter twenty-seven, purchasing of the Moline Code of Ordinance as legal requirements for federal funding.
So pursuant to a recent HUD audit, uh, the, uh, there has been a recommendation to update our code in the, uh, our, our purchasing chapter to incorporate, uh, the Code of Federal Regulation requirements for HUD, uh, these financing as well as to incorporate by reference the Solidness Disposal Act. So this amendment here incorporates what?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Went, seconded by Alderman Schmidt. Discussion? Mr. Went?
Just, I, I always like to ask these questions when there's a federal recommendation for something. What, what happens if we, I'm not saying that I'm opposed to it, I, I move for it. But what happens if we don't?
Right, if we don't, um, update our code, uh, there is no penalty. Uh, they have suggested this, does near the CFR. Um, it certainly is a better roadmap than considering, uh, purchasing or considering, um, that. So we take their suggestion, and we do. Uh, and there would be a penalty, obviously, if we did not comply with the CFR. But not for this.
Is there, what, what's the benefit? Do we get opportunity for more dollars, or?
No, no.
So?
Just combine with their suggestions.
Okay.
Anything else?
Do?
Mr. Went?
Do we have any indication on what the negative ramifications, why we didn't have this before? Uh, or why we wouldn't have had something? Is there, is there anything in here that's limiting on us?
No, it's, uh, what they suggested was that we better define, um, affirmative action, uh, priorities, so we don't know.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, um, any further discussion? Hearing done, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed. Is there another this evening? Okay, so we move to informational. Erosion control and maintenance of public drainage wave. Mr. Perer, uh, was lovely to introduce, be able to introduce you finally.
Thank you.
And, uh, he's our environmental manager. And I have to say, I was happy to see him a part of a MRCTI event.
That was a great day.
Was that Friday?
Yeah, Friday morning.
Last Friday.
It was, it was a fun time, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, for those of you, yeah, hi, yeah, I'm Andy. I'm the environmental manager here for Moline. I've been here a couple of months and very much, very much enjoying my time so far. So we thank you for, uh, letting me speak here tonight. We've been kind of combing through our stormwater ordinance. As you can see from the title, we're proposing a few changes. We want to discuss a few things that have been brought to our attention. So, um, can I, can you hear me? I feel quiet. Do you guys can hear me? Okay, sorry. Uh, so, yeah, I guess we're just, we've been kind of clicking pretty good here. I'll keep that going. Uh, some of the discussion points tonight will be, uh, class one grading and drainage permits, detention basin inspections, open drainage side slopes, and vegetation trash control. Who's basically responsible for that, uh, across Moline? Uh, so, in the city of Moline, we have two different types of, uh, grading and drainage permits, class one and class two. We'll talk about class two very briefly and a couple more slides. But class one are the little, the little projects. If you disturb anything over five hundred square feet, you're required to get a class one grading permit. We would like to adjust that five hundred square foot threshold to fifteen hundred square feet. We've talked to other departments and staff and we feel that that, this would do quite a few things. It would make us more, uh, developer friendly. Um, most of the five hundred, most of the permits that we're seeing fall into the, uh, I'm replacing my driveway, I'm tearing it up, I'm putting it right back down. So, uh, we think that if we move it up to fifteen hundred, it would, it would allow, I'm sorry, it would allow staff to actually not do so many inspections. I, something I kind of didn't put up on here is that all permits, whether they're class one or class two, you have to inspect them once a week, once every seven days or after a half inch rain. So we're, right now, we have staff doing, well, there are seventy-nine permits, uh, class one permits issued to date. And at any given time, I would say approximately twenty, twenty-five permits are open. And if you get a week where you have a half inch rain, Monday, Wednesday, maybe even Friday, you're spending a lot of time going out and inspecting what are essentially simple jobs. A replace, uh, remove and replace of a driveway. We, we feel like we don't really need to be out there that many times and de- dedicate that much manpower to that kind of a job. Um, and it also goes without saying, we will, there are other inspectors, um, Moline inspectors on those jobs as well. When you pour, build a garage, pour some concrete, there will be other inspectors to kind of keep an eye on things and let us know if we have any troubles. So that would be one of our first. Uh, detention basin inspections. Anybody who owns a detention basin in the city of Moline is required to do an, an annual inspection. And every five years, they have to have an engineer inspected. Uh, we, we're, we would like to take over the annual inspection. It is very challenging. We have, uh, of give or take forty, forty-five basins throughout the city. I've seen two different lists. I would work this winter to get one list to make sure exactly we know where our assets are. We, uh, so at any given, let me see, so, honestly, I lost my point here. So by us doing our inspections, we are not mailing out forty, forty-five letters in January waiting for, waiting to hear back every year. We can go out and do all these inspections in probably three days. It'll save us a lot of time, it'll also free up a little more, that much more manpower from mailing corresponding with these people, trying to get it done. It'll, it'll just allow that much more man, manpower for, um, staff to address preventative maintenance issues, to clean the, the stormwater system, to prevent flooding and possible future larger issues. Uh, and not to mention, the inspections that are done by these individuals, no offense to them, they're done by the owner. And if you're, if you own a, a, a bake shop or something, you're not exactly sure what you're looking for in the detention basin inspection. So by us doing it, me and my staff doing it, we know what we're looking for, it's very efficient, we're in and out. We take a picture, we fill out the form, and we, and we report it. So we would absolutely require them to do the five-year inspections still. But we'd like to put a little, we, we would like to make that, uh, upon our request. If we see something that we feel is not functional or not as it was originally designed, we'd love to be able to say, you know, we don't, we're not pointing any fingers, but we need you to have an engineer sign off on this still. This will ensure, uh, efficiency and making sure that all the basins across the city are effective and kind of protecting the neighbors and all the downstream people from it. That was number two. Pretty quick. Um, the next point is, is mostly about drainage channels, um, the, the, how they function, and even a little bit of detention structures again. So I won't go into the definition of a channel. We have ordinance defines a channel, but it's anywhere water flows on a regular basis. They can be pipes, natural, you know, man-made, uh, perennial, intermittent, they can, they're, you know what a channel is. Uh, and the next point is basically, the city of Moline is made up of a complex system of these channels. They come in all shapes and sizes, um, all different types of conditions, they have different grades to them. They're all over the place. Um, some of our stormwater, you know, some of our stormwater utility that we have, a, a part of that is to make sure that we can, uh, maintain our own channels, provide erosion control, maybe even a few detention or control structures on these channels. So that was, um, we would like, it kind of got brought up to us, you know, how do these functions, how are they supposed to be designed, these, uh, channels? So in a class two permit, so I mentioned the class ones earlier, the class two permits require, uh, that's anything over an acre. And it often requires a big detention pond to be installed. And that can be above ground, below ground, it can come in all different shapes and sizes as well. Um, it was pointed out to us that in our, in that ordinance area, um, they require a three-to-one slope on these channels, all the, all detention bases. Um, it also means open, open channels as well. It's a little bit, I, I think the wording is a little bit confusing in this part, and so that's kind of why the discussion came up. Uh, three-to-one slope is a great goal for all detention basins around the city. Uh, theoretically, it's great for all channels around the city, but we'll see why that's going to be very challenging. But from here on in, we'd like to just make sure that we enforce this. This is just kind of a point that was brought to our attention that may not, it was just one line in this ordinance, and it's actually could make a very big impact. A three-to-one side slope on any channel will hold more water, it'll be easier to maintain, easier to clean garbage out of. And so, um, that's our, you know, we're not really recommending any change at this point. We, we just want to make sure that we're conveying, we're communicating that we, we do agree with this. And, uh, I got a next, the next slide here kind of conveys the message here a little bit better. Uh, the, the green side, you know, is a, is kind of, I don't know, they call it a two-to-four, I would call that a one-to-two slope. But, uh, the blue line is what we're looking at. Those are the slopes that, uh, drainage channels should be at, um, according to our ordinance. As you can see, they're, they probably wouldn't be too comfortable to walk along, but they're very, they're accessible to mow, to clean and garbage out of, to maintain, to make sure they function. They also would probably, oh, they also do a much better job at preventing erosion and, uh, you know, failing over the years as a, a two-to, two-to-four slope for sure. So, um, we appreciated that, you know, that was kind of brought to our attention. There are areas in, in throughout Moline that would, we would love to see a three-to-one slope. But, um, they're gonna be, they're gonna be, it's gonna present some challenges. Um, so, you know, in this area, if we wanted to cut back that to get a three-to-one slope, we'd have to remove sidewalks, city street, and stuff like that, so. You know, no, no change here, we just wanted to point out that the three-to-one slope is a great idea. We will try and enforce that, even in any city projects that come along. If we have the chance to redo a street or a road, or even a lot, if there's any way to, uh, slow down that, uh, erosion and make it more accessible for maintenance, that's, uh, that's, that's what we'll do. And I should have said this at the beginning, if anybody has any questions, I don't consider myself a great speaker, so you're not gonna throw my flow off if you do, please. I, 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 we're almost done already, so. This last topic is probably the, the trickiest one to get, get a clear, concise answer on. So we have, you know, who maintains the drainage channels that are in front of your property that are in the right? Uh, there are a couple of different places in the codes. Municipal code requires some things, vegetation code defines the owner. They both define the owner of the property of, I'm sorry, they both define the owner of the channel as the adjacent property owner. Um, and we expect things like, uh, removing snow and ice from sidewalks, moving debris, uh, maintain Boulevard in accordance with city standards, which is probably just keeping the grass cut, don't let it get too high. So we do have this, both a couple of, I'm sorry, a couple of places where this code is saying that we put the ownership on the pro- adjacent property owner. That's fine, we, but we do also have a history. It's kind of conflicting because we do have a history of coming in and maintaining some ditches when we think it is unreasonable for, to put that burden on a property owner. Uh, whether it's, you know, removing, um, addressing a massive amount of erosion, removing cattails that will al- almost always require a backhoe to get in there and scoop out that. So, we, you know, we kind of have to look into a couple of last issues here. Um, that's kind of where we're at in the, we, I guess we'd look for direction if that's the way we want to maintain this. We put the ownership on the, on the adjacent property owner unless somebody wants to, you know, address those change, or change that in any way. It's a tricky thing, because it's not, it's a rule that's put in place, but it's not a hundred percent. You know, sometimes we do come in to be a good, you know, city for those reasons.
Mr. Waldron?
Andy, thank you for the presentation.
Yes, thanks. Good information. Uh, this, uh, the, uh, prevent debris from accumulating on right-of-way and in channels and in ditches. This is all has been a tricky one, as a matter of fact. We all know seal coat roads that are supposed to have ditches.
Yeah.
That through whatever reason have been filled in. So are you saying that right-of-way, the homeowner should be required to return that to a ditch?
That would not be my call. I would, I don't think I would agree with that. Um, but, and again, that is the municipal code. Um, I don't know, is that the Public Works Enforcement code? That's not my stormwater code. That's just, we, it's, it's a, this is a tricky topic because of different departments that kind of all have a little bit of their hand in it, including myself sometimes. I don't think it should be a, well, I don't know if I'm allowed to speak for that, but what I, what I think. But I, I'm not sure how I, I wouldn't enforce that code, uh, or make anybody return a ditch.
Traditionally, when they've filled up these ditches and then the road floods, and then they call.
Yes.
They're amazed why the road is flooded. Uh, the city has come along and re, retrenched.
And that's what makes the gray area look, yeah, we wouldn't come in in that instance and fix that, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I don't think I'd ever have somebody go out and dig out a ditch that they, that they didn't fill in. If time fills it in or sediment or, you know, stuff, stuff like that, I would, oh, no, that would not be my rule.
Thank you.
Mr. O'Brien?
Erosion is probably an issue that most people in Moline are aware of. They don't realize that how big a problem it is in the city. I mean, I had an erosion project on my own property this year, because all rainfall, we got a lot of underground water.
Really?
Yeah, it, it's just an area that, for a reason, there's a lot of Indians here, because there's a lot of fresh water in the ground.
Yeah.
Um, but the Moline Housing Authority had a meeting last night, and they're gonna be doing some projects, a couple of projects dealing with erosion. Now, I, I assume, and I, they probably do it till spring. But I assume that they'll be, th- they're gonna have city inspectors out there. And, and, and this three-to-one thing is?
No, it's federal property.
Oh, okay.
They don't have? Yeah, I guess maybe if they don't require a permit.
They're gonna have to have some kind of permit.
Yeah, I'd have to see, but absolutely, I would.
But I assume the three-to-one would be something that they would?
Yeah, I, I hope they, why don't you?
We would recommend for that.
I'd be happy to talk to those, or even get involved.
Yeah, they're surprised.
Please let me know. We have a, a city project now that we're looking to remove, a launch, uh, fill that was put in there, I don't know, decades ago to establish a three-to-one, because it's caused so much problems over the years. And that's a, you know, that's a, that's on, on private property as well.
Thank you. Mr. Went?
Uh, Andy, thank, thank you very much.
You and I have talked a couple of times and, and about this, and, and emailed back and forth.
And, uh, and to that, I, I, I think, um, based on what our conversations were, there are some places in the code that, uh, have some gray area that probably need to be, other places that need to be cleaned up. There needs to be probably some, uh, discussions on future developments and other things that come in to make sure that they meet these whenever possible, the three-to-two, or three-to-one, or, um, use the Givian basket, or, uh, or get a variance. Because in Moline, we know that there are some topography in the ravines that, that, you're, we're just gonna have to deal with some of it. And so, what I would like to do is, uh, uh, direct staff to come back with, uh, um, the code adjustments that were recommended here, but also expand your scope to, uh, other, um, parts of the code that you feel aren't clear, that are contradictory, that, uh, will address, uh, not only, uh, uh, future developments and, and those sorts of things, but also, um, uh, stormwater, uh, uh, retention for new developments that, that we discuss.
Oh, yeah, yeah, making the site better than what it was.
Yeah, so like if you have a, a situation where somebody, because right now, if somebody comes in and it's a completely asphalt parking lot, and they put a coffee shop on it or something like that. Right now, they don't have to put a blade of grass, they don't have to do anything to make the stormwater any better there. They just can't make it worse. And if it's an asphalt, uh, parking lot, you can't make it worse. And so, working on those sorts of things to incrementally improve our, our stormwater, because, you know, we're having twenty-five-year rain events three times a year. And so we need to figure this out.
That's a great point.
Yeah, so, uh, that was my long motion.
Yeah, I've got a plan on combing through, combing through it and getting back to you. First of not many, but a couple of discussions here.
Yeah.
Looking forward to it.
Got a motion by Mr. Went, seconded by, um, Mr. Moyer. Discussion from the council. All right, all in favor of that directive?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you for doing that extra work.
No, thank you for that.
Appreciate it. Yep. Okay, administrative recommendation on the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-four budgets, distribution of budget books. Which person start taking it off?
Yeah, I'm gonna kick it off, and then I'm gonna let Carol do her magic. So anyhow, uh, in front of you, uh, is a budget for fiscal year twenty-twenty-two. And tonight, we will present the budget highlights to you based upon all the input received from all of the departments, uh, in my office. And under the guidance, careful guidance of the finance director and her staff, to present you with a conservative budget that is balanced across all funds, which is a great accomplishment. So I want to compliment the- So I want to compliment the staff before I move on on their efforts to provide both conservative budget requests and for the finance department for being able to pull this together, given all of the other projects that were going on simultaneously this year. There was a lot of heavy lifting that this council has already completed. And I think it's important to note that the CIP was presented by Joe back in September, I believe, early September. The ARPA fund allocations were made by this council last week for fiscal years 21 through 24. Keep in mind, there'll still be a 25 and a 26 before all of these funds are exhausted, if we haven't exhausted them already. He also adopted a strategic plan for fiscal year 22-24, which is critical. If you remember when we adopted the plan, I laid out a process, a flow chart that showed exactly how this entire system should work. So much of the heavy lifting is done, which is a compliment to the staff and to the council and the mayor. We also went through the process related to all of the TIFs that are still active, TIF 1 and so on, and went and did the rebalancing of all those TIFs and moving the funds accordingly based on a consultant's recommendation. So a lot of the heavy lifting got done over the last two to three months. So this particular budget does have a focus on personnel, which the council has already addressed in terms of public works with the addition of the six positions, 21 going into fiscal 22. Specifically to address infrastructure, which as you know, is one of the top pillars in the city. But we also, you will see as we go through, have allocated resources for personnel in the community and economic development department. Because economic development is also one of the pillars. And rebuilding these departments is critical in terms of addressing not only infrastructure, but economic development practices in the city. And the work that needs to be done in order to meet all the strategic goals that were laid out with the community and with the council. So with that, rather than belaboring it any further or without much further ado, I want to turn the meeting over to Carol so she can take you through to the tonight's budget presentation, which is strictly focused on the budget highlights. Leading into our meeting this Saturday morning at seven o'clock at the library, breakfast will be served, just so you know. So you don't have to come hungry, you can come hungry. And hopefully, when we have those meetings, that meeting on Saturday, we'll be able to get into the budget books that were distributed to each of you this evening. Based on the hard work that the finance department did religiously, literally over the last two to three months. So with that, thank you, Carol, and I'd like to turn the meeting over to you now.
Thank you. We are very pleased to be joined by this boss, and this is for your consideration and for a balanced budget, not only for 22, but also for 23. It has been a team effort by the entire permanent staff and staff members in the city hall. So we're pleased with that, and it's moving in those working documents. The budget is presented, is $144 million, that is the gross budget. And in half, which is typical of that, as we go through it, is the net budget. And the net budget is $100 million, 500,000 dollars. And that is net of transfers, internal service funds, and net salary.
Oh, real quick, Carol. The net change in reserves is 7,200,000. So is that reserves?
That's the net change, we're actually up those 500,000.
So we're actually increasing our reserves or we're spending out of those reserves?
Because of the ARPA firms, we have actually.
No, I understand that. I mean, the ARPA is shown as source revenue above and as expenses netted out below. But the net change in reserves is 7.2 million. Is that?
It's a net change between 2 and 5.77. Okay, it's net worth.
Okay.
Yeah, please continue, Carol, we'll get to those specifically.
Carol, if you could just pull the mic a little bit closer to it.
Can everybody hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. The 22 budget, as proposed, as we said, that's basically what we're going to be concentrating on here tonight, is balanced, as proposed, at the 44, 144 million, 2 million, 144, 2 million. There is no increase in the levy rate or the utility fees built in this budget. And then the levy rate not yet. It does maintain. It does maintain.
I can't let it go, Your Honor. Are we asking for more money in our levy than we asked for last year?
The levy rate is the same, it's going to go up.
I didn't ask you that.
Dollars for 180,000.
Are we asking for more money in our levy than we asked for last year?
Yes, 181,000.
You've raised the levy, you've raised taxes. The rate spreads it out, but you're asking for more money. Thank you.
I'm unclear how keeping a levy rate the same is an increase in taxes. Because our rate would allow so that when the value of a home went up and those costs go up, we have to adjust for our cost of living and our own expenses. So I think it's, it's not, it's unwise to say that by asking the same rate and accepting the increases that come with that is a raising of the taxes.
Well, it's on slide, it's on slide.
Excuse me, we have got to stay focused. And if we go down this road of this argument right now, we will not get through the important information we need. This is a, this is an argument that you could spend hours on. We already know where the dividing line is on this item. There are other taxing bodies that have done the exact same thing to very minimal change for individual residents. And I think we should be respectful of our staff and let her get through her presentation.
And tonight, what I'm giving is very high level. We're going to have an opportunity to go down and listen to a lot of the types of questions on Saturday. Again, no increase in the levy rate or utility fees as presented. It does maintain helping fund balances and half reserves pretty much to offer, but there are a couple of ones that are slightly dropped. It does align with the council's strategic plan and our three hooks. And those three hooks, again, are infrastructure, quality of place, and the economy. And the 22 budget. Unfortunately, I'm so sorry, I have to put my glasses on.
All right, just keep pulling the mic close to you, please.
Okay. And the 22 budget proposes a conservative operating budget throughout all funds with significant funding allocated towards the first year of the council's strategic plan. And those fundings include funding all of the existing city services and authorized personnel. We have over $10 million of council's allocation for ARPA funds, $1,250,000 for the first year of the council's allocation in the strategic plan. And both of those items and details are in tab one, that look like we want to review this. We have also allocated $27 million for the combination of CIP projects and those ones that Joe brought forward for the year this year. And it includes capital equipment and the first phase of the new Riverside project center and tenant courts. It also includes new personnel, full funding of the six public works positions that you initially approved here in the last couple of weeks. As well as Bob had touched on, six new proposed positions across various departments, primary and economic development. The budgets also include modest increases of about 1.7% in operating expenses across all funds. And that is net of the strategic plan top set. So the 22 budget, as presented, builds a strong financial foundation for the city's sustainable future, especially leading into years 22-23. Now, we're going to take this very brief look at the primary revenues for the city. And the two major revenues that are the highest. Two highest dollar amounts of revenues are our tax category. That includes property taxes, home room sales taxes, well, as hotel motel tax. All of that, all of the tipping from it, prices are very significant amount of tax. And then the second largest category is intergovernmental revenue, which makes up about 21% of the pot. If we look at the detail here on the next page, we're going to concentrate primarily on the green pot. And I'm very pleased to say that some of our revenues are actually up significantly, especially from 2020, but even if you compare back to 2019. So the first thing I'm going to take you to is the very bottom where it says the total major revenues. And you can see in 2019, our total revenues citywide across our major top 10 sources totaled 70,320,000. And now we are up to about 73 and a half million dollars. And that's about a four and a half percent increase overall. That may not sound like a lot, but if you look back historically, that's a significantly, very significantly grown for us. And I'd like to zero in on a couple of them, especially our sales tax, it's the third one down. If you look back to 2019, we were at 10,050. We are now approaching the 10,500,000 dollar range. And that is based on cash in the bank, monies that we have already received through August. That trend is very strong, and I also looked at the IML projections. We believe that that's very achievable, that 10,500,000. Our home room sales tax is also up. It's up about 1% from 2019. But in, back in 2020, when COVID hit, that was the revenue source that really took a hit, was our local home room sales tax. So we're really happy to see that one coming back. And again, that's based on year-to-date action that we receive so far. If we take a look at income tax, and then we're going to look at the personal property replacement taxes as well. Those are two of the most significant jumps. We are actually seeing a 22% increase from 2020. And we have actually backed that down for future projections, just wondering if they will be holding true. But currently, we have actually received 4.6 million dollars through August. And if you look back to 2019, just through August, we were basically almost succeeding for the entire year of 19, which is full year. And again, some of it is the stimulus, people going back to work, and also the minimum wage going up. So those are projections over the next few years, we're going to continue to monitor very closely. The other large and very significant increase is in our personal property replacement tax. That is largely corporate income tax. And again, it is pretty much unprecedented that we've been receiving that kind of increases. And with IML overall, they said that corporate income tax is up 67% statewide. Our projections are at 44%. I'm trying to be conservative. We will be thrilled if here in 21, it hits a higher level. But going forward, I've actually backed it down 20% from this year. Again, none of us have a crystal ball, but I want to be conservative. And I am thankful that we have reserves that if we're missing the mark on any of these, that we have the opportunity to be able to adjust them. But citywide, as we look at this, we're up about four and a half percent from 2019. So overall, I feel that our revenue projections are considerable or should be achievable. When you go to look at property taxes for 2021, our EAD is 792 million. And that is up 1.5% across all property classes, including residential, rental, and that's right. And again, that's the increase over 2020, and those are the taxes that will be collectible in 2022. Our levy rate is currently $2.0177, and we recommend to remain constant with that levy. And the total new tax dollars that that would generate would be 15,987,000, and that's up about 181,000. And we will get into that in a little bit, but Bob and I, our proposal is for consideration to use some of those new dollars to pay for the new positions that Kate's been talking about. The property tax impact on home, residential home and commercial are here. The impact on 100,000 residential property, and again, the 1.15% is across and averaged across all property classes. For residential property, the average is up 1.39% growth citywide. So on a $100,000 home, it would be about a $9 increase. For commercial property, the average growth is only up 0.68%. And on a $500,000 property, it equates to about $23. And again, those 180,000 dollars, we are recommending consideration of the positions.
Mr. Went.
You said that the average across all was 1.5? What was above the 1.5 that brought the average to 1.5 of all the residential is 1.3?
I'm sorry, 1.15.
Okay, all right, thank you.
On the previous, on the previous sheet, 1.15 average, I'm so sorry.
Okay, that's why I just wanted to make sure that.
On the revenue side, we were also projecting approximately 1.5 million dollars of savings for issuing detention allocation work. We are actually going to market here November 15th. The market is, as Anthony Mazzelli had talked about, has moved ever so slightly, but we still think that we are in this range. Bob and I have talked, and our recommendation is to redistribute those potential savings to 218,000 to go to the general fund to help fund the additional new positions as well as the taxes, property taxes. Just shy of 400,000 dollars to help stabilize the library budget and fund vacant positions that are still open as well as ongoing operating. If we were to move 400,000 over to the library at this redistributive property taxes, it would help restore their fund balance to a little over 300,000 for 2022. And it would bring the reserves to expenditures up to about 10.4%. As you know, our fund balance policy, we try to have reserves to expenditures between 20 and 25%. As we look to parks, if we were to distribute 900,000 to the parks budget, again, it could help stabilize the budget, it would help fund vacant positions, fund our seasonal health going forward. It'll pay for significant increases in minimum wage and also significant dollars allocated for the ash tree removal. And increase the additional CIP projects that have been identified by the park board.
Carol, does that include any like tree replacement? There's probably not, nothing going on.
I'm so sorry, I can't hear you.
Does that include anything for tree replacement? Probably not.
I don't think there's tree replacement yet. I have to ask Gary for sure on it. I can let you know on Saturday.
Okay.
I, I, I know they do a normal tree replacement amount every year. I don't know if that has increased as a result of this.
Okay, thanks.
Park Board does restore their fund balances to around 400,000 dollars, and their reserves to expenditures are at 7%. So within parks and library, we still have work to do, even with this increased property taxes. There's work to do going forward.
So a quick question, so you, were their reserves to expenditures percentage lower than the 10.53 and 7.05 before this proposal?
Yes, and over a year ago, they were pretty much down to zero.
Got it.
And our projections back in January, we were suggesting trying to hire some staff back, their five-year plan. And our projections back in January, we were suggesting trying to hire some staff back, their fire plan, both of them were below water.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Hundreds of thousands.
Thank you.
On the expenditure side, this is our pie again, we break it up. Our two main categories of expenditures are public safety, which is about nineteen percent. And the second, this, um, biggest one is for business type and that includes polymer and price funds. And if you see here, you go down the page, the total gross budget of a hundred and forty-four million. We're backing out the transfers to a supplier pension. For comparison purposes with previous year's budgets, um, we've taken out the art funding of about nine point eight and our internal service funds of seventeen point nine, which brings us down to that one hundred million, about five hundred thousand. What makes up the largest pieces of our expenditures is number one, first one. And this year, in two thousand and twenty-two, it does fund the first full year of the six new public works employees that were just approved, um, by council. It also fills the assistant city, assistant city administrator position that is currently open. We also are looking for guidance from your consideration on funding six new full-time positions in economic development and some additional seasonal positions, four hundred and fifty-eight thousand total. And you can kind of see if you run down through that list, um, we've got a rental housing and property inspector, zoning coordinator that we're, we're recommending for July one of twenty-two. Economic development program manager, another laborer in facilities. And a position to be split between water and W P C, um, for a distribution mechanic. A land bait coordinator, which would be, I don't know if it's fully funded or ninety percent funded through grant, is that right, Peter?
Partially funded.
That, that's my, yeah, partially funded, um, and we've increased seasonal positions in stormwater and then various upgrades throughout the city for about fifty thousand. And again, all these positions would be funded through a combination of the increased property taxes, savings from the P O B bonds, grants, um, that K J was mentioning, as well as other varied revenues that we touched on.
I, I, I think just to make sure that everybody, that the grant funding of that is only like five percent of it. So I, I, I just don't want people to get the, the characterization that it's.
I know you have it in there, right?
Yeah. Yeah, but it's only five percent.
On the expenditure side, one of the larger significant increases is that it does fund the twenty-two year, um, out of our ARPA allocation, which is a total of twenty million, eight hundred thousand dollar total from the federal government. For the twenty-two year, we've allocated ten million, sixty thousand dollars. And some of those highlights there are listed below. We've got the Iowa, um, the I seventy-four acquisition and utilization for two million dollars. Our one-stop shop for two million, water and sewer improvements of two million, potentially broadband installation of a million. And then residential road repair and improvements for a million. And then there are several of the various categories.
Mr. West?
Would it be possible to get sent that Excel sheet that we were working on? Cause I think a couple of those numbers, like the water and sewer is less than I think the number that we came up with is.
Oh, the one that, that Fon was, Fon was working on last Monday.
It's actually in the budget for two thousand and one.
Okay.
The two million on the water and sewer is just for the twenty-two year. We had it spread out, Bob's recommendation.
The reason for that is, one, designing the projects, two, bidding those projects, and three, being able to do all the projects simultaneously, you can't. You know, we don't even be able to do all the projects that are currently funded. So it's spreading the cost out over a period of years so that we can hit realistic budget figures. Perfect.
Thank you.
And again, that's under cap. For the strategic plan for twenty-two, we have included one million, two hundred and fifty-two thousand. Again, this is an operating budget across all funds. And some of those highlights, and that was the list that we went through, was the very last item, um, it was a week ago. To update the comprehensive plan for two fifty, the public art, um, placemaking program for a hundred and fifty. Launch the city's continuing, um, celebration for a hundred and fifty thousand. Retain professional grant writing at a hundred thousand and update the zoning code for a hundred. And very many other smaller amounts, and again, those are all under the cap one in your, in your budget. The general fund is the city's main operating fund and budget for two thousand and twenty-two is projected to be forty-one million, eight hundred thousand. And for those new contributors, the general fund is where all of the administration, finance, all police and fire, all community development, those very large primary departments as well as public works are all part of the general fund. The ending bond balance projected at twelve thirty-one twenty-two totals seventeen point two million dollars, and that is net of our TIP advances. That equates to about forty-one point one five percent of the fund balances to expenditures. It's a hundred and forty-eight days and it totals up to about six point seven million dollars over our fund balance policy of the twenty to twenty-five percent. I do need to say that with the issuance of the pension obligation bonds, approximately five point nine million dollars will be moved to the debt service fund from the general fund. And that reduces our overall expenditures in the general fund, which then increases the fund balance as a percentage of expenditures. So we're almost having the same amount of money. But our percentage available jumps from thirty-two point eight percent up to forty-one point one five. That's kind of a tricky thing to think about.
Love a county.
But we'll talk about that more on Saturday. But that is what is happening, transferring that kind of money over to the debt service. One point six million dollars in TIP advances also drop off in twenty-two, which is very positive in the general policy. It is actually, it's going to be down from ten point three million dollars of the basis to eight point seven million dollars, largely because of TIP number one. So again, very positive impact on the general fund. With additional discussions that I've had with Anthony Mazzelli from Sphere and with Bob, as we go and march into issuing bonds here with our moonage review with, with, uh, our credit rating agency coming up, we have talked about the possibility we wanted to run it by council to recommend, since we've got significant, um, fund balances, to officially restrict one million dollars of those reserves for the P O, P O B bonds as like a stabilization fund. And it would be to stabilize the variable investment returns in future years. You may never need it, it's just restricting it. And my understanding from talking with the underwriter and, and with Sphere, if the council would choose to do this, the credit rating agencies look very favorably upon it as well as the fact that we are in that forty percent range of reserves.
Mr. West?
A, a, as part of that discussion, we also need to have the discussion of the three point seven million from TIP eleven that were projected to be underwater. And then the nine million that's hanging around our neck that we've offloaded to utilities that really should be a, a general fund drag. And so, uh, my, my concern, I mean, this looks nice, but we've got those, those drags that aren't, uh, recognized. And I just don't want to, a few years from now, ten years from now, all of a sudden go, oops, uh, how do we make up that?
And when we go through the discussion on Saturday, um, Bob and I had had a talk. And when we were talking about the utility funds here, um, this last week, we went back and said, what if we pull all those TIP sevens back into the general fund, which is the way we had adopted the original twenty twenty one budget, we adopted it that way. So, and so based, um, discussions with Bob, we actually pulled TIP one back in. So the utility funds, I'm not showing that huge nine million dollar drag split between waters and, and W P C. And we'll go through that. So these balances included in the advances right now, um, the eight million dollars includes TIP seven. The next category here is we're just talking about the TIP funds. Um, as, as you know, the TIP number one is closed out, will be finalized. Since we're doing the three-year plan, um, we actually will be projecting to receive five hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars once TIP one closes out, that will be available in two thousand and twenty-three. So we, as we approach the following year, we will have some healthy increases in property taxes. And again, for all the development and, and, and all of that, the work that's been done at TIP one, it's nice to be able to potentially have those types of taxes coming back for the city. Advances from the general fund to support, um, TIP shortfalls against, across all funds, it includes TIP seven and eleven, eight point six million dollars will be back on the general fund. New development opportunities in TIP seven and TIP eleven, as we talked about, continue to be a high priority of the council. And available project dollars that were identified in twenty twenty-one in TIP number eight and nine will be spared, we believe, per council direction by the end of the year. We just started to update components and everybody's working very, very hard, um, to get some projects going and completed. So we would like those funds. Just a real quick update on the library. Um, we talked about how if we cross over the funding from the P O B bonds, that it will help restore funding for staffing, um, operating budgets. And it also brings that pre-pandemic hours. And they are hoping if the council does allocate additional property tax dollars, that beginning in September of twenty-two, they will be, restore their Sunday hours again through the year. So that's a positive thing that Brian is very excited about. As we look three.
Going to that, Carol, how many staff are they down now that they're not able to do that until September of two thousand and twenty-two?
I think they're, they're trying to fill right now, is it just one or is it two? Oh, three?
Three positions.
But one of them is the, uh, development manager, correct?
Correct, that's correct.
And that one doesn't count towards doing Sunday hours.
One is circulation.
One is circulation.
And Leah, do you recall the other one we talked about? There you go.
And they, those two, two openings prevent them from doing Sunday hours till September of two thousand and twenty-two.
Well, my understanding was, I think there, there might be sufficient for reallocation to try to help.
Right.
Hold on, it could be Brian trying to get in.
Oh, can you, I'm sorry, can you hear me? This is Brian.
Yes, please go ahead, Mr. Lewis.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Um, the, the third vacant position, um, is our, uh, uh, library associate in our children's department. So that's another, um, frontline service worker that we're, we're close to getting back. I think the idea, um, was to, has never been to run Sunday hours year-round. It was to run them Labor Day through, uh, Memorial Day each year. That's, that's a little bit how it was done in previous years when we were able to offer Sunday hours. And, uh, uh, we, we, we thought that September would be a good starting date for that. Hopefully we'll be even more past the pandemic and obviously we'll have our, our staff members back in place at that point, so.
Okay. We can, thank you.
And moving forward, again, this is a snapshot of the parks and recs department. Again, this is two thousand and twenty-four. Um, we talked about, um, additional taxes would help with, again, their staffing, operating and C I P. If we look forward to two thousand and twenty-four, the projected fund balance in the parks department, is, is going to be around two hundred thousand and only about three percent, um, fund balance to expenditures. So over the next three years, even though we're allocating a significant amount of tax, because their minimum wages are going up, just cost of operations, um, we're going to continue to see that decline. So as we work through a three-year budget, we're going to have to continue to allocate even additional dollars over the potential savings from the P O Bs. And the, the savings from pension obligation bonds are ongoing. It's just not increasing. The next is our active health fund. We're very, very pleased, and Leah's going to be bringing this forward as well, that we've received our health renewal and we are up only two point six one percent. So this is wonderful news. It has a very positive impact on our budget. Going forward into twenty-three and twenty-four, we are projecting a five percent increase going forward. But we will take the two point six one that's coming here. The city and the employees, as you know, continue to share in any increased costs at a split of eighty-twenty. The renewal as it came in has a hundred percent projected cost of our health care at seven point one million dollars. And the aggregate attachment point, which is the maximum amount that the city would pay out, which is a hundred and twenty-five percent, is set at eight point seven million dollars. The reason I'm pointing out those numbers is because we have adequate fund balances in our reserves to fund the difference between the projected and the maximum amount, um, that we will be exposed to. The required amount, the difference between the eight point seven and the seven point one is one point six million dollars. We actually have two point million dollars, two point three million dollars available in cash reserves. So we've got a little bit extra above and beyond our hundred and twenty-five percent attachment point, which is very positive. In our liability fund, we have built a budget around a projected increase of four percent. I spoke with the net in the H R department and she expects to receive the actual renewal rates here by the end of October. So just virtually any day. And she hopes to be on the committee of the whole agenda on November ninth to give you an update on those actual renewal amounts. Staff is requesting quotes for lowering deductibles, especially for work comp. We don't know what the cost will be, but we thought it was at least worth looking at to see if it would make sense to increase, um, to lower some of the deductibles so that our exposure wouldn't be so great. Right now in work comp, we have five hundred thousand dollars deductible per claim. And because of that, the city's exposure is very high and we must maintain higher cash reserves as a result of that because just the expected risk. So we're going to, we're going to look at that, weigh the benefits and make some recommendations for council's consideration. And maybe cost prohibitive, I'm not sure, but we thought it was a good thing to look at. Our projected cash balance right now, um, as we projected to be twelve thirty-one and twenty-two is three point six million dollars. Next is our capital expenditures, always a significant part of the budget. For two thousand and twenty-two, we, we are proposing thirty point two million dollars. That includes the seventeen point three million dollars of C I P projects across all funds that Joe had recommended here a month ago. That's between C I P, water, sewer, storm funds, as well as M F T. A very significant amount, um, of M F T rebuild money is put in for two thousand and twenty-two.
Your Honor? Yes, Mr. West? I have a question about the capital. I missed, uh, the last Tuesday in August. And other than that, I don't think I've missed any meetings or anything else. Is the last meeting in August where we decided which the capital projects would be, and I just missed that? What meeting did I miss then where we went through the individual projects that we were going to fund? It was, it was a while ago.
Yeah.
Is Joe on? Is Joe on?
Mr. Kuhlback, could you help us with the timeline?
Yeah, I don't recall the exact date. It would have been August, maybe twenty-four. Six out, but right around that timeframe.
So if I have questions, Joe, if I have questions about individual projects that are on the CIP, as an example, I took a look at one of the stormwater projects, and it's for a private road, and never in Molina have we ever spent any money on a private road. And so I have some questions about some of those projects that are listed. Would Saturday be the convenient time to bring those up?
Depends on what you...
I don't see why not. I mean, the purpose of the meeting Saturday is to make sure everybody gets their questions answered. And that's just one, the first meeting. We also have the opportunity to have another meeting as necessary.
It must be the one I missed.
I think it might have been.
Okay.
Yeah, it was, I found it. I'll forward it to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Barnes.
It was October, I'm sorry, it was August thirty-first.
Yeah.
August thirty-one?
Yep.
You were a fisher. You were a trophy fisher.
Go ahead, Ms. Barnes.
And the list of those projects are in the binder.
Oh, I looked. Not to worry.
The capital expenditures include three point two million dollars of the entire ARCA allocation of ten million dollars. And that also includes the water and sewer for twenty-two, the residential streets portion of the ARCA funds, the bikeways and the multi-modal transportation, as well as I-AMC. The twenty-two budget does establish a couple of new funds and a new department. We've set aside a new fund for the public art fund for the hundred and fifty thousand we talked about. IEMA fund for the PPE expenditures, we were very pleased here a week ago that we were approved for some IEMA, that's federal, Illinois passed the money through IEMA for all of our PPE equipment for twenty-four. So we're going to keep track of that in a separate fund, including the single audit. It's a lot of paperwork, but well worth it. Again, our ARCA fund is a separate fund. And then we set up our Human Rights Commission Department with an annual budget of ten million.
Your Honor.
Yes, Mr. Lur.
We talked last Wednesday about how we were funding the public art, the hundred and fifty thousand, and that it was in capital at that time when we talked about it. You guys are going to get back to us and explain how we were funding the hundred and fifty. How are we funding it?
Out of the general fund.
Okay.
It is not the CIP.
Thank you.
With the enterprise, we will spend quite a little bit of time. I want to go through each individual fund during Saturday's work session. And we're going to be reviewing the five-year cash flows across all the funds and the current fee structures. Again, we are not proposing any fee increases for two thousand and twenty-two. And we want to take two thousand and twenty-two as time to naturally review the rates and take a look at a study that will help us determine what we should be reviewing.
Mr. Went.
Yeah, when you say that this is happening, is that because you guys are budgeting that into it? So that would be something to be...
Yes, this for your consideration. And I think we talked about it too on that last Wednesday night. It's part of that strategic plan.
Yeah, I think there was some discussion on whether we actually needed it or not.
But no, it's for your consideration if you want to move forward with that. And this chart here is a history of our major fund balances. We are going to be going through this in detail on Saturday. And I know it's also very hard to see, but across the board, we'll be touching on, you know, healthy fund balances for most of our funds, as well as cash reserves in our enterprise funds. And then we've already mentioned that the two main areas that need some more are Parks and Library. And then we're also going to talk about sanitation. The sanitation fund, it needs to be addressed as well regarding the fee structure. And then one note, just as we move forward over the next upcoming years, it's nothing to change overnight. But just over the next several years, it would be nice to have high priority to be placed on stabilizing reserve balances in each individual fund. So future borrowing between funds through cash advances and grants are kept to a minimum possible. As you know, even with WPC, it's had such healthy cash reserves, but we've used it to, I think it was one point quarter, one point two million dollars, but went to the captain's table. It, you know, it's offset some of the tips and that. As we work through the plan for the next years, whatever we can do to try to stabilize some of those other fund balances, it would be a very positive thing. And that's not anything to change. Again, with our general fund reserves, we talked about projecting six point seven million dollars over our twenty to twenty-five percent fund balance policy. Bob and I, we are recommending for council to consider holding on to those reserves for the time frame. To consider waiting out another year and evaluate where we truly are at with COVID nineteen impact. I know everything is improving, but things are precarious at the same time. Monitor the impact of inflation fears on revenues and the cost of supplies. For instance, our road construction materials, road salts, gas, the cost of our vehicles, everything right now is starting to tick up a little bit. So just kind of hold out a bit. And again, wait to see if the infrastructure stimulus package is approved. That could have a reverse effect. If it's a yes, it will have a huge positive impact on the economy. And if the council does choose to do some drawdowns, my recommendation and Bob's as well, is to consider it for one-time purchases. Don't include something in the ongoing operating cost, but consider things possibly even some of those unfunded ARCA requests that we did not get funded. And we've listed some of those that were not in the highest priorities when the council took a vote last week. And that is the end of the PowerPoint. I would like to take just a few minutes if we could. And I'd like to show, especially the new Alderman and the mayor as well, what is in the book so you can come prepared as much as possible for that thing. And again, we're not going to talk about details, but just to quickly, to use your standards, what's here. First of all, you'll see on the side pocket is our calendar. And again, Bob mentioned that we are going to be meeting at seven AM on Saturday. And then our second work session is scheduled for October twenty-sixth, with a final review on November the second, if you need. So as we go through the book, and I just want you to know on Saturday, as well as the next couple of days, we are not going to go through every single item. These are references. So hopefully, there is material here that will pretty much answer all of our questions. If we go into tab number one, just have a page through it, you'll see copies of your strategic plan, as well as all the ARCA funding. And you will see those spreadsheets that we were talking about. On page twenty-six is the strategic plan allocations by year that Bob allocated. And on twenty-seven, it is the summary of all the ARCA expenditures by year. There we go here, twenty-six and twenty-seven. And if we go to the page, the second tab, if you're ready, I just, again, I just want to identify the sections. I don't want to rush you. But just so you know what's here, there are many charts to go through, ten-year histories. So if you have questions about our assessed values for property taxes, you know, how much tax dollars were generated, what values happened, that's all within these charts. We've also got a lot of information on revenues, historical revenue trends. So we will be addressing some of these, especially with the property taxes and the impact on residences on Saturday. I will point out, if you want to go to page five and six under tab two, this is actually just a fun. I'm not going to do it. Go through this with you on page five and six, if you're there. This is a snapshot. We can pull a hundred residential properties. And if you look through the addresses, you can find your own. They're all mixed in in there. So if you want to see what the impact is of leaving the levy rate the same, you will find your property mixed in this list on pages five and six. And then we've got commercial properties, and there's a little map from GIS. We can see that we took properties throughout the city as best we could to make it even throughout the city when we chose to put the total in. Under tab three, you'll find all of the city's fund equity statements. These are the ones that accountants love. Other people, they just want to go to the bottom line. These are the ones I could spend a day looking through. It's like reading material. I'll try not to get to that level without you. But the council had requested three year budgets this year. And this is all the documentation and summary for how all the fund balances across three years are affected by the line item detail of budgets that were submitted by each department. The next tab is personnel. And I might just highlight a couple of things. To the first half, you'll see the organizational chart. Not spent a lot of time, but you will also see there is a current authorized position list. And it also lists the total amount of vacancies that are currently outstanding. And we currently have open, and Leah, she cannot work anymore. She's in her department because as soon as she hires somebody, we lose somebody else. But we currently have open thirty-nine positions. And then as you know, we just added another seven positions, six with public works, and there's still the one assistant city administrator position that is open. So in total, if you look at that as a percentage of total authorized positions, it's just shy of full percentage. So as we compiled the budget a year ago at this time, we had open positions of forty-three. And although we have gained tremendous ground on filling some, we have also lost people. So in the budgets, Alderman went, that suggested this, it was even placed prior to my coming. There was a contr, we call it a contrapersonality now. We're not doing it by line item, but we're doing it in total. And what we've taken for two thousand and twenty-two, and then it will be declining, we're at thirteen percent right now, twelve to thirteen percent. We are, for twenty-two, assuming, we're hoping to get down within the eight to eight percent range. So we have offset the authorized dollars by eight to eight and a half percent and it's trending down. And we know we'll always have open positions. We have downsized the budget as a result of that. The next tab, some highlights on the general fund. Again, it's summaries of the departments in total. You can see a five-year history. The next tab is our debt service summaries. This includes all the POV bonds. It includes all of the Parks, the new Aquatic Center. And again, we'll be touching on this briefly because we talked about that a lot in the last couple of months. The next tab, number seven, is the capital. And this has the sheets for all three years, and including the current one. There's four years of capital projects all laid out. And we're going to touch on that briefly and make sure that everyone is in sync with those dollars that are there. And I would like to point out, under that tab on page nine, this is new that we put together. It's actually a list of all capital equipment and other capital improvements, so not just CIP. It includes things like in our water and WPC plants especially, there are large capital expenditures that are not infrastructure projects. So for WPC, in twenty twenty-two, we will see almost four and a half million dollars coming out of there for capital expenditures. And that's going to be part of the drawdown on the cash reserves. And again, we'll work through all this on Saturday. Then we've got our Parks Department, our five-year budget. Got our library budget as well for five years. We have copies of all the TIP summaries. And that's where you will see that we have crossed that TIP number seven back into the general fund advances. The next tab is special service areas. While over downtown, there's three service areas. You can see the levy rates. It's really just one simple page, but there are budgets supporting all of those. We've got our general trust, where we're holding a variety of money in those funds. And there's a spreadsheet that shows all the types of things that we do in our general fund, general trust fund. We've got our tourism. We've got the most recent financial statement from the mark. So we'll be taking a look at that, pardon me, from the tax layer. Showing my age. Then we've got our health insurance funds, and we're going to be zeroing in primarily on cash flows. And again, when I came two years ago, we just began this process of trying to look at cash flows and trying to ensure what should the cash flows and fund balances be in conjunction with revenues and expenditures. And our plan is working. We continue to tweak it year by year. But if we look at the charts as we'll go through on Saturday, you'll see revenues and expenditures now pretty much just right on, right on target. And the same holds true for our liability fund, our IT department. They've put together some good expenditures going forward with the technology plan that we're going to go through. Facility management fleet, you'll see very significant dollars in fleet replacements that are coming up. And then we've got the tab on our police and fire pension funds. Again, another copy of the POVs. We've been through police and fire pension quite a good issue. Then we've got each of our four enterprise funds on the next four tabs. Water, WPC, storm, and sanitation. I want to spend quite a little bit of time this year to go through that, as I talked about, and take a review of what the current fee level is and what the impact is. There's a section here that just shows, it's from our assessor, it's our preliminary evaluation report. And those values tie out to the numbers I presented tonight. And then we've got all of our line item details that's attached. And then if you go to the very last tab, we've got some department summaries where the department heads just kind of bulleted some of the primary things that they hope to be doing in the next three years. To kind of give you an idea, some of them do equate back to dollars that are needed. Some of them are just projects that need to go forward, not necessarily equated to dollars. But that is your book. Again, we're not going to go through every page, but hopefully, it's got pretty much everything that you need to make good decisions here coming into the next couple of work sessions.
Thank you very much, Ms. Barnes. Any questions at this time? We're saving them for Saturday after our homework. Thank you very much.
And we look forward to your inputting considerations.
Okay, so we close out that meeting and we move to the regular meeting. Pledge of allegiance, please.
A allegiance to the pride of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a liberty and justice for all.
Is there a invocation at all? Okay. Roll call, please. Alderman Macias.
Present.
Alderman Went.
Present.
Timian.
Present.
Moyer.
Present.
O'Brien.
Present.
Waldron.
Present.
Schmidt.
Present.
And Alderman Williams is absent. Your Honor, I request approval of committee of the whole and council meeting minutes of October thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. Do we have a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, by Alderman Went, second, and by Alderman Schmidt. Roll call, please. Alderman Moyer.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Waldron.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Macias.
Aye.
Went.
Aye.
Timian.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays. Seven ayes, no nays. And that motion passes. Not consent agenda resolutions. Council Bill 1205-2021, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attest to the sole source purchase and installation of two flight pumps and associated control panel from Electric Pump Incorporated for the Rock River Lift Station, and authorizing the Director of Utilities to execute any necessary documents for the purchase of said equipment in the amount of $76,553.
Move to approve, whether we need consent or just?
That's the not consent agenda, so, yeah, we need a motion to approve. Thank you, Alderman Went.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Went, second by Alderman O'Brien. Any discussion? Roll call? Roll call, please. Oh, I'm sorry. Did you ask for discussion? I apologize. I did. Okay. But I didn't see any R and S. Thank you. Alderman Moyer.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Waldron.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Macias.
Aye.
Went.
Aye.
Timian.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays. And that motion passes. And that is all I have this evening, Your Honor. Thank you. Ms. Lane's business. Mr. Macias.
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Thank you. Mr. Went.
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. Uh, based on the conversation earlier, um, regarding water rates inside and outside, uh, I'd like to, uh, make a motion that, uh, we direct staff to review rates for all customers, uh, outside of Moline, looking at both, uh, those that are potential for annexation and those that are, um, located within other adjacent jurisdictions.
Your second?
Second.
Motion by Alderman Went, second by Alderman Moyer. Any discussion? Mr. Went?
Yeah, I, I just think that this is a, a good idea and let, let staff, uh, take a look at this and, uh, get a, a good idea of, uh, what we're agreeing to. And is this something our residents are subsidizing, or are they paying the, the right amount?
Thank you. Mr. O'Brien?
I think originally, you know, you're talking about the arbitrary number that's put out there. And I think years ago, when we built the new water plant, I think the idea was to bring in more customers. We want to scare them off with a super high rate. Uh, but yeah, we can talk about it, I guess.
Yeah, a- and I don't disagree with you, but it, what I'd like to see is, I don't want to scare them off either. I want them to like come in in bulk rather than, yeah.
Anything else? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Right, that motion passes. Thank you so much. Still loaded for following through on that.
And then the other, I, I just want to thank everybody, uh, went to, uh, the ribbon cuttings, both at, uh, Los Portales. Did I say that right?
Yeah.
Thank you. It, it tasted awesome. Uh, and, uh, Stitch, please, uh, today. Jeff put it together. It was, it was great. It was great lunch, and, um, uh, it's good to see, uh, growth downtown Moline.
Mr. Timian?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Mr. Moyer?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Mr. O'Brien?
Nothing.
Mr. Schmidt?
Nothing, Your Honor.
All right, I just have one thing. I have this here, the Mississippi River Plastic Pollution Initiative. If you want some more information on what Mr. Per and I, uh, attended on Friday, it was a, it was the kick, public-facing kickoff, um, of an app that is tracking plastic pollution in our whole entire Quad City region. Um, it is, I neglected to bring my phone with the app on it. Do you happen to have one?
Oh, yeah, Marine Tracker.
Marine Tracker. It has a turtle as, um, the, the app picture. It would be an awesome thing to do with children, um, to help this initiative. It goes through October, and, um, they were gonna, are gonna use, it's a citizen science approach, right? So we all collect, the squares get checked off in this grid of the Quad Cities, and, and we know how much plastic is in the environment. Um, and then we can work, especially MRCTI, can work to address that with commerce, with our cities, and how, like, how we limit that plastic around here. So that's what that's all about, if you want to check out that app. Um, but it was a good kickoff, and the, the scientists who created the app, um, from University of Georgia was there. Um, so it was great to hear all that experience. And, and, and we had representation from mayors from Port Byron and Clinton, as well as our local mayor. So there's a lot of support for this initiative, um, out there. And that is all I have. Can we pause?
In the interest of time, nothing this evening.
Thank you. Anyone else from staff? Okay.
Your Honor.
Yes, sir.
Make a motion that the council convene an executive session for the purpose of discussion of pending probable or imminent litigation, 5 ILCS 120/2C11, and property acquisition, 5 ILC 120/2C5.
Second.
Um, roll call, please. Alderman Moyer.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Waldron.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Macias.
Aye.
Went.
Aye.
Timian.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays. We move to the executive session.